Welcome, everybody. We're gonna add an item to the agenda. If you all have this in the paper in front of you, it's not necessarily on your computer. It's a resolution extending the local state of emergency for till the end of July this year. And I have been promised this will be the last time we extend it. I'm not sure why that promise is being made, but there it is. Would anybody like to make a motion, please?
I move that we approve this resolution 2024-3938 extending the local state of emergency.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 2024-3938. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Today, we're going to attempt to fill the vacancy Denise Bacon left for Denise's. The problem is that we, according to our council rules, have to pass this by a quorum of the entire six people left, which is four. We have five of us here today. So it is possible that we will not be able to get through this. We'll table it and finish it at the next meeting if that if that happens. So staff has worked at creating a system. Normally, we would vote over and over with all of the members on the roll until we had an agreement, but that's not likely going to happen. So what we have proposed is a system whereby we are going to go through successive rounds to eliminate people. I would have preferred this to be in private so that it doesn't, well, for obvious reasons. Unfortunately, Oregon's open meeting laws require that we all vote and that each of us vote on record. So we're going to attempt that. Rachel, do you want to explain how this is going to work?
We actually did rock, paper, scissors earlier, and I lost, so I'm going to explain. So step one is going to be that the counselors will have read the packets to get a feel for the candidates, including the candidates' answers to the questions that the counselors derived earlier. And so that stage has already occurred. Step two, there is a letter of support from Councilor McBride, who sadly cannot be here tonight, and that letter of support is going to be read out by me in just a moment. Step three, the city recorder will conduct a roll call vote. Each counselor can only say one name. The lowest scoring candidate or candidates, if there's a tie for bottom spot, will be eliminated. This process will be repeated until there is only one candidate left. Step four, the last candidate will now be known. The staff will request a motion to appoint that person. If the last candidate does not get to four votes required by our statutes, then the matter will have to be tabled until next council session, when we will have more counselors here and more chance of getting to a quorum. I shall now read the letter of support. Dear Mayor and Newburgh City Councilors, I regret that I won't be present at the council meeting on June 17th, as I will be out of state on vacation in a remote area. In my absence, I would like to give the council my recommendation for who I would be voting to fill Molly Olsen's seat, which of course is actually Denise's seat. After carefully reading all the applicant information of those that applied, my vote, if present, would be going to Glenn Floyd. He has previously applied for the seat vacated by Denise Bacon and has done so again this time. His experience as a long-term resident of Newburgh gives him the insight to know not only the needs of Newburgh and its citizens, but uniquely qualified for the needs of the people in his district. His perspective, experience, and longevity in Newburgh far outweigh other applicants who have been here for only just a few years. As a result, I would encourage you to consider Glenn Floyd to fill Molly Olsen's seat on the Newburgh City Council. I request that this letter be publicly read for the record. Sincerely, the Honorable Counselor Mike McBride. And now we're ready to go through the procedure unless there's any further discussion, Honorable Mayor.
The answer is yes. And the other, but the question I have, does anybody object to this to this system?
I will say it makes me slightly uncomfortable to not have a verbal interview process with a candidate. I haven't, this is the first that I have done it in this fashion. Doesn't mean it's wrong, doesn't mean I won't support it, but I do think there's value to speaking and hearing from the person themselves. So that would be my preference. Secondly, I just want to ask the question around disclosures and number of the people on that have applied, I know. And is it, do we need to disclose our, any relationship that we have with someone that's applied? We haven't, this hasn't come up in the time I've been on council, but I just want to be clear that I do have relationships with people that have.
Thank you. Will?
And I will say that when the Honorable Mayor directed us to develop this process, his intent was to have a situation where there was no possible embarrassment or loss of face for candidates who were being interviewed in public. And that's, that was the intent.
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak to the, what I'm reading as a conflict of interest question, you know, the need to disclose conflict of interest extend to primarily to pecuniary gain or loss. And so when it comes to appointing a potential future member of council, there doesn't need to be a disclosure in the absence of that. You know, if you have knowledge of, you know, if you have personal knowledge, if someone's, you know, related to you, or it's a friend, or you have prior dealings, of course, you can, you can disclose that, but it's not a, not a statutory obligation.
So I would like to begin by stating that these are six candidates. All six of these candidates would be very good at filling this position. This is one of the toughest things we do. Of course, everything we do is tough. All decisions come down to this. But to the candidates, thank you for your applications. Thank you for your service to Newburgh, and please continue. We'll see you in the future. So Will, go ahead.
So what we'll do is proceed with a roll call vote, and when I call your name, you'll say the name of the candidate you would like to support. And then we'll get, that'll be the first round. So we're going to start with Counselor Wheatley.
Glenn Floyd.
Counselor Kilburg.
For the same reasons Mike mentioned in his letter, I support Glenn Floyd as well.
Counselor Carmen.
First, I'd like to say I met with a few of you, and I talked to you on the phone. So thank you for your time. These are really good candidates, like you said. And it was tough for me, but my vote is Jennifer Bean.
And Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
I had a hard time with this as well, reading through the packet. Some people I know more than others, so I think that that's my question around disclosure. And having lived in a small community, I've worked with a number of people that are applying, but I would say Jerry Turgason.
And Mayor Rosacker. All right, so with that round, Gabrielle Humley and Ryan McDermott have been eliminated, and we'll move on to our next round. So your options for this round are Jennifer Bean, Glenn Floyd, Michael Griffiths, and Jerry Turgason. I'm going to do a roll call vote again, and you'll share the name of the candidate you'd like to support. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna rotate the order I go through this, and none of you have to be first or last every time. So Peggy Kilburg. And Counselor Carmen. And Counselor Yarnell Holloman. So the lowest scoring in each round get eliminated, so yeah.
All right, I'm gonna go with the Mayor Mike Griffiths.
All right, Mayor Rosacker.
Well, in the interest of this not taking all night, I had made my mind up to go with Glenn Floyd.
And Counselor Wheatley.
Mr. Floyd.
Okay, so our lowest scoring this round was Jerry Turgason. And we'll move forward. Now our choices are Jennifer Bean, Glenn Floyd, and Michael Griffiths. So we'll go through, starting with Counselor Carmen.
I don't, I guess I don't see any point in stretching this out to another meeting. I don't think anyone's votes are gonna change, so I guess I'll vote for Glenn Floyd.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Mike Griffiths.
Mayor Rosacker.
Glenn Floyd.
Counselor Wheatley.
Glenn Floyd.
And Counselor Kilburg.
Glenn Floyd. I would like to thank everybody who applied as well. I've worked with a few of you on committees. I hope you will seek out opportunities to serve on some of the committees as well going forward. We really appreciate you applying.
Or you can run for office, too.
All right, so at this point, we need a motion to appoint that person, and then one more vote.
I move we appoint Glenn Floyd to the city council.
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Glenn Floyd. All in favor signify, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
No worries, just a moment. All right, Mayor Rosacker.
Yes.
Counselor Wheatley.
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg.
Yes.
Counselor Carmen.
Yes.
And Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Glenn. Look forward to seeing you next meeting. And I, I believe I heard that you're intending to run for that position in November, so good luck to you. Thanks to all the candidates, great group of people. Now we're looking at the planning commission, ex officio assignment. In my opinion, that would be a very good first assignment for the newly accounted, or the new, for Glenn, when he starts. So I would be in favor of tabling this until the next meeting and appointing him while he's in office, although it is kind of tradition to railroad the people that aren't here. So is it all right to go ahead and table this and move on? All right, great. Will, you are up. Our city manager's report, which we always enjoy.
Even the statistics, Pat. And of course, these are the statistics to the end of April 2024. And for those of you in the audience who might not know, the reason why the statistics are always slightly in arrears is to let the numbers settle out in their different databases so they can be harvested for the report, and that's why it's April. Planning, combined planning decisions of all sorts, there were six. And as you can see, in general, planning and building activity is trending down right now. For housing units, 11. And that's a pretty good number for where we're at, and we do expect a little later in the year to see an uptick as the Kalina properties start to get put in. Building permits of other types, 104. Fairly typical. Building inspections, and you see that trended up again, 785, which is an extremely large amount for just one and a half FTEs who carry out those inspections. Just think about that for a minute. One and a half people, 785 building inspections. Community engagement, there were 18 submissions through the website. Social media engagement, 18,381, and that has been trending up tremendously. And I partly put that onto the fact that we've diversified our social media platforms, so we're getting more engagement right now. We may expect to see this increase even more once we've rolled out the new website. And as you know, we're working on a new website right now. Socials, followers for Facebook, 4144, other platforms, 687, and LinkedIn, 443. Public records requests, these are always very time consuming, and they do take a lot of effort by our staff, but there were four. 0.96 million of payments to accounts payable, and 1.1 million of payroll. And I got some detail on those questions at the end. HR activity, three hires, one separation, sorry, other way around. Recruitments, three, hires, one, separation, zero, and claims, four. Not all claims are bad things, sometimes they're just quality of life things. IT resolved 235 service tickets for the city. And as you see, that's been trending up a little bit as we get more busy. There were three after-hours on-call events that occurred. Library activity, the door count was 7,444, and circulation events, 30,584. And it has become fairly standard now for our circulation to be over 30,000 most months. Public safety, 2,155 calls for service. Fairly standard number. 688 traffic stops, people putting their lives on the line to actually enforce our traffic laws, even when the traffic is extremely intense. 510 citations and warnings, a little bit more than we've seen recently. And I'm very glad to announce only four DUIIs, and so it's good to see that number tracking down. 682 911 calls and 2,593 non-emergency calls were placed. And you can see that was relatively quieter than some months, but the trend has still been fairly flat. In terms of production of water, 55.9 million gallons, and 123.6 million gallons of the other stuff were processed. 1,189 work orders completed generally in public works, and those are individual repairs or fixies that are conducted on pieces of pipe or other infrastructure. 31.7 megawatt hours of electricity generated as the sun has been shining nicely lately. And that's the totals for April of 2024. However, for a little bit of more detail, in terms of the recruitments, we were running project coordinator and grant writer, which was not a new FTE. It was a repurposed FTE to try to bring in more cash. We also were recruiting for entry-level communications officer, 911 dispatch. We were recruiting for lateral communications officer, 911 dispatch. And we, the hire that we conducted was Joseph Alby, who was promoted to become city technology manager. And do you know what our largest check amounts were? Katie? Yes, because for some reason, it's not on this printout. We will know just a moment.
Okay. So we had Peterson Cat for 186,000, and then we had, of course, Miller Nash for our attorney fees for 66,699. And then we had Northwest Firefighters for 91,000. And for that, that's our monthly health insurance for NPD. And that's it.
And so that represents not too much capital improvement projects happening right now. You'll start to see more CIP-related costs as we get into July, and so on, so forth. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. We have had nobody sign up for public comments today, so I'm gonna close public comments. And now it's time for the update on the cultural center, or cultural district update. Hi, Cory.
Good evening. I promise this will be nice and short. This is the presentation that I must give to you every year. Not a lot changes from year to year. Sorry, other way. So I think I did update the pictures for you, though. So the city of Newburgh, Shaillam Park and Rec came together in 2013 to create the cultural district. It was reaffirmed in 2019, and I have the resolution number for you there. On the map there, you can see the outline of the cultural district. It's bordered by Hancock, Blaine School, and Sherman Streets, and includes the Newburgh Public Library, Carnegie Court, which is the area we have programs on, a public parking lot at Blaine and Hancock, and the Shaillam Cultural Center, as well as the surrounding land and private properties as well. Here are some of the events we have had and have coming up. As you can see, this is Oregon, so most of what we do is in the summer. We're getting ready for our big summer reading programs outside, so those are mostly taking place on Carnegie Court, and a few of those, the streets do get blocked off for. That includes Toons on Tuesday, the Lavender Festival, and in December, that will include the tree lighting, if that happens again as well. And then I have left the website at the bottom there, so that's regularly updated with any programs that we have going on.
Can you please remind us why this was formed in the first place? I can't remember, and what surface or what purpose does it serve?
So it was formed initially to make sure that the three entities were talking to each other, and I think it was created mostly because of parking issues. So those got figured out, so now we have a parking plan in place. We have a sheet that everyone uses, they fill it out to make sure that there's signage for where people can park, so that the neighbors also have a way to be heard if they're having issues with parking. Toons on Tuesday has done a great job reaching out to neighbors, giving them signs as well. So as you, as you might know, several of the houses in that area don't have garages, so the parking in front of their house is the only parking they have, and that can be a little hard on Toons on Tuesday, which is our largest event that we close the streets down for. So Toons on Tuesday has done a great job reaching out to the neighbors. They can get a no parking sign to put in front of their house. So I feel like all of those issues are pretty much, I don't, we don't have any pressing issues, but it is in place so that if we do, we have a way of communicating with each other. Thank you. You're welcome. The executive board members include the Shaillam Cultural District, me for the library, Robin for city council, and then Teresa is our neighborhood representative, and then Casey is part of the Shaillam Park and Recreation District. And I believe that is it. Oh, sorry, Rachel. Are there any questions for me about the cultural district?
I had the same one, Robin, that thank you, you did a very good job of explaining it.
Thank you.
So now we have, oh, hi, Paul. You're gonna give us a update on the electrical contract bid.
Yes, absolutely. I'm Paul, one of the staff at Public Works Engineering. And I have it in your packet here, a request for your approval to authorize a construction contract to green power electrical contractors for the wastewater treatment plant PLC project. We need this project because without it, wastewater would not be able to be processed nicely and in an automatic mode. So the bid came in at $638,500. So I'm asking you to consider that and to have city manager be authorized to enter into a contract. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and that's all I have.
I just wanted to add one thing, that this particular bid I was very pleased about because the initial engineering estimate was in the region of $800,000. So if Paul and the good staff can keep this at the bid amount, then that's actually a couple of hundred thousand dollars saved on the CIP plan that you folks have seen before. So that's, that would be a good thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Peggy.
Still talking. Now I forgot my question. So this is in the current year's budget already? My sense is that this is not an emergency, but it's pretty critical that we take care of it, and it's not a big new thing on the budget, new item.
Yes, absolutely. This is a very critical need for the wastewater treatment.
Robin, you have your button. All right, so we have a motion of bill, no. It is a motion. Sorry, folks. All right, we have a resolution. It's number 2024-3934. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2024-3934.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2024-3934. All in favor, signify. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Well, it's not like we haven't seen it at the Budget Committee and twice at council. Next will be a presentation from Waste Management. But before we get started, I have to ask, how did the golf game go? You were not the winning team, is it?
Turn there.
Hey, thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor. My name's Dave Huber, Public Sector Manager for Waste Management. City Council members, thank you for having us here this evening. I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Mike Jeffries, Area Pricing Director.
Jason Willie, District Manager of Newburgh.
And so this evening, we're here to go over our annual review, financial review. And to go over how we've performed this past year and kind of what we're projecting to look like this following year. And then we plan to come back in a couple of weeks to do an operations report as well. But for tonight, this evening, we wanted to just kind of keep it specific to our detailed cost report that we sent in. So with that, I think I'll let Mike go through that in detail.
Okay, I believe you guys had a idea of this report in your packet. And so, yeah, so on an annual basis, Waste Management turns in an operating, a report showing the operating results on on the financial side of it. And so last year, we had a rate of return of eleven point eight percent and in two thousand and twenty two. And in two thousand and twenty three, we've actually done a little worse at six point five seven percent or six point seven four percent. And with projecting forth, our costs for two thousand and twenty four, we're anticipating being in at about six point five seven percent. And with that. Some of the highlights of the report, you can see. You know, we had a nice, we're growing revenue. We've had some nice addition of residential homes over the previous year. But at the same time, we've seen a lot of some spikes in expenses. And some of those expenses include higher costs for processing of recycling. So when we pick up all the recycling, it comes back to the transfer station. And from there, it's sent to our processor in Portland. And we've seen an uptick in their expenses for the previous year. And then with that, in order to maintain the talented drivers that we have, we have to make sure we have a living wage. And so we projected a four percent increase in those costs for the coming year. And with that, we're anticipating needing about a three point eight, three percent rate increase for the following, for this coming year. Which would, if approved, would take effect hopefully in July. And I can go into more detail if you like, or if there's any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Peggy.
I was hesitant. I just didn't want to interrupt if Dave or Jason was going to add anything to it. I my document attachments won't open in my system. So I can't remember exactly, but. You got a raise last, you got an increase last year from us. When was the increase previous to that? I don't. I don't think you see them annually typically, do you?
Typically, we'd like to get ahead of our expenses and at like come like every other year. But the last couple of years, we've come before two years in a row now, yes. But prior to that, I believe it was two thousand and twenty one, the previous increase.
Hold up question. What was the percentage of the increase last year that we approved?
Four point seven percent.
Four point seven. And I do remember both years, that term being that your reasonable. Rate of return or profit margin is about eleven percent. And so now you're below that. What factors go into determining reasonableness?
That's a great question. We like to work within a range of like eight to twelve percent. And so anytime we're outside of those ranges, we either look for a rate reduction if we're above twelve percent or below eight percent. We would be looking for a rate adjustment. And some of the costs that impact that, obviously disposal costs is a big factor. Processing of recycling, maintenance has been a big expense for us lately. We've are in the process of trying to order trucks, and we've been delayed in getting new trucks. As a result, we actually have had to rent trucks in order to meet the needs of the city. And we have, we've recently have gotten a few trucks in, so those expenses will go away. But we will have new trucks that will have higher depreciation than what we currently have on our in our in our run rate in our reports.
So what would happen if you didn't have your eleven percent reasonable margin?
Eventually, we would be before you for an even larger increase for the following year. So, you know, it's just stacks up on one another. So we've seen in other jurisdictions, like in the Portland area, we've seen rates as high as, you know, fourteen percent and eight percent. So and as low as four percent. So it's just a matter of trying to stay stay in front of inflation. And and that's kind of our request that we have before you is actually lower than the C P I adjustment that was calculated for this year.
So if you didn't get enough to get back up to your eleven percent, this year you would just ask for more next year to get back to that margin?
Correct. And we're actually only asking to get back to ten percent. So eleven percent would be nice, but we're only hoping to be at ten percent. And then challenging Jason and his team to really control their costs is going forward. So we won't be before before you next year for another rate adjustment.
I seem to remember we have a franchise agreement with you guys. And you can't come to us unless a certain, you have to show that you're. At a certain amount. Is that correct? Do you know what that is? You can't just keep coming to us for, I mean. What does the franchise agreement say?
I believe it states a reasonable rate of return. And so in the industry.
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve percent is typically a reasonable rate of return.
Okay.
And that's why we like to state a range so that we can try to work within that range and not before you every year for a rate adjustment. Like the City of Portland has a specified rate of nine point five percent. So on an annual basis, rates are always being adjusted in the City of Portland.
So how big of an increase would it be to get you to eight percent? As opposed to ten? I'll just follow up with my commentary, I guess. I'm really struggling because our our households in Newburgh would love to have a ten or eleven percent margin. And they're actually underwater, many of them, because of inflation. And I know you're not responsible for all of that, but I'm trying to balance the two. And our municipal bill, we're trying to figure out how to. To deal with that for the same reason. I mean, it's done for this next year, but. So I'm trying to balance the two. I might be open to something, but I don't think I would vote for the full three point eight percent just because of. Knowing how our residents are struggling in Newburgh with inflation everywhere.
Right. So I guess you would say we would need a, you know, cut that three point eight, three to one point nine, one point nine, two percent. Somewhere in that range.
So if I understand correctly, we're not taking action on this tonight. This is for information only. Is that right?
Yes, so I wanted to facilitate the opportunity for the guys to also bring a PowerPoint, which they're going to bring next time. And so the actual action would be next time. Plus also, in the in the spirit of our new council process, we always like to do a one, two process. If council hasn't seen the material before.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much. I guess we'll see you next meeting.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move into legislative hearing. For the S D C changes. Who's presenting?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a couple of brief comments. On on your two.
Okay.
Great. So as Mayor already pointed out, this is a legislative hearing in front of the council is ordinance number two thousand and twenty four dash two nine, two six. It's a familiar ordinance. It's the S D C ordinance that council and staff and others worked so hard on in previous months. And the updated S D C ordinance was passed in February of this year. This is just a cleanup ordinance, removing reference to indexing. As you may recall, under the old model and structure, there was an ability for S D C. Rates to be increased each year, every April. In the new model or structure, you have, you no longer rely on the indexing. Instead, now there is an opportunity to review those rates periodically. I believe it's every other year. And so this is just reflecting that change. And we recommend adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty four dash two nine, two six. I'm happy to take any questions.
Before we do that, I should call the legislative hearing to order. This is a opportunity to declare conflicts of interest or abstentions. Do any of the counselors have any conflicts or abstentions to declare? All right, we'll move on. James, please go ahead and continue.
Sure. So. We do recommend adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty four dash two nine, two six.
So there we have no public testimony. Is that correct, Rachel?
That's correct.
I'm going to close up public testimony. We have our recommendation from staff, so. This seems like a no brainer to me. I don't see any reason not to appoint it. Does anybody have anything they want to say about it? So how about, let's see.
And I'll need the council, obviously, to go through our normal legislative process of first to vote on waiting the second reading. And then after that, you can adopt the ordinance, read by title only, and I'm happy to read that that title for you. Two separate, yes, Councilor Kilburg. Thank you.
I move that we read, we waive the second reading of this resolution ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote, please.
Just a second here. All right, Councilor, Councilor Wheatley.
Yes.
Yeah. Counselor Kilburg.
Yes.
Counselor Carmen.
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Hallman.
Yes.
Mayor Rosacker.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Now we need a most the second motion. Are you ready to do that as well, Peggy?
I can find my note. I move that we adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty four, two nine, two six by number only. Title only. To adopt code amendments to the system development charges chapter of the city's municipal code.
Bucket.
Would you like to read the title?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in front of council for adoption is ordinance number two thousand and twenty four dash two nine, two six. An ordinance to adopt code amendments to the system development charges chapter of Newburgh's municipal code.
Roll call vote, please.
All right. Mayor Rosacker.
Yes.
Counselor Wheatley.
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg.
Yes.
Counselor Carmen.
Yes.
Counselor Hallman. Yarnell Hallman.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Next is going to be, what do we, we have nothing under continued business. Is that correct? I thought we had two legislative or.
Yes, we have supplemental budget.
Okay, that is also part of, okay, that's a public hearing. All right, so we'll move on to the approval of the supplemental budget. Approval or not of the supplemental budget.
All right, good evening. I'll let you open it since this is a public hearing.
Thank you. It's good to have experience staff here. I call this public hearing to order. At this point, this is an opportunity for a declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions. Does anybody have conflicts of interest or abstentions to declare? Seeing none, it is time for our staff report.
All right. Just when you thought you were done with the budget, we have one more. So this is the second supplemental budget of the year. And I'm going to go through the funds and the changes that we have. So the total adjustments for the supplemental is one million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty three dollars. The main reason for these increases was due to additional T L T revenue that we received that we weren't expecting. We received insurance reimbursements for the city hall flooding and then the water treatment. Actuators that went down during the freeze as well. And then our interest income has exceeded our expectations as well, so all good things. So for the general fund, our resources increased three hundred and thirty, three hundred and seventy seven thousand. And this was mainly due to T L T revenue exceeding our previous budgetary projections. And this is for the transfer in that we get the portion for the general fund. And then our interest income has also really exceeded our previous expectations as well. The police appropriation, we increased by a hundred thousand. This is mostly due to the contract negotiation settling, which is now allowing for vacation payout and longevity to align with the rest of the city's policies. And then the contingency was just the the difference on from the resources to the police. Then for administrative services fund, the resources increased by three hundred and eighty seven thousand. And this was mostly from the reimbursement from the insurance that we received for the city hall flood and the water treatment plant freeze incidents that we had. We also increased the city attorney appropriation by seventy five thousand. This was due to additional legal fees that we incurred from the union negotiations for A F S M. And then the public works appropriation increased by five hundred and ninety seven thousand. A lot of this is because we have fleet vehicle purchases that we have contingencies assigned specifically for that. So they've spent that, and then we moved that into the capital outlay. So we, it was just a moving of their designated funds because they've spent that. And then we also increased that because we're budgeting our additional expenditures related to the freeze incident in that public works appropriation line. And then our insurance appropriation, we had a decrease there just because our insurance costs. For the premium this fiscal year came in less than what we were anticipating. And actually, we discovered that's going to be about the same cost next year. So that's really good news that that's not going to be going up a lot. And then contingency was the offset, so it decreased mostly by the purchase of the vehicle fleet. Yes, did you have something to add?
You know, I can't resist a quick victory lap. So despite the insurance impact of the flood. By running a clean ethical city hall. Our general insurance rates are remaining on par.
Yeah, and that was mostly due to the workers' comp. Yeah.
Forty thousand down because we've managed to. Bring our rate under one for the first time in a long time.
Yeah. So that's good news. The street fund, so we increased resources there by seventy three thousand. And this was because we see. And this was because we see, received a grant for the street sweeper, which was partially recorded in the street fund. And so we increased the public works appropriation by 342,000. Part of this was from the grant that we received for the sweeper, and then the rest of it came from that vehicle fleet purchase. So they had a contingency in there that was designated specifically for fleet purchases. So we just moved that contingency into capital outlay because they've spent it. And then the contingency was the offset. The wastewater fund, the public works appropriation increased by 482,000. Again, this was the same thing. They had the vehicle fleet purchases assigned in the contingency. So we just moved from the contingency into capital outlay because they spent that money and contingency was the offset. And then the water fund was a similar situation. We increased the public works appropriation by 495,000. And again, it was for the vehicle fleet purchases that they made throughout the year. So we just moved from their designated contingency to capital outlay. The building inspection fund was an increase of 46,000. This exact same situation, it was for a vehicle fleet purpose, purchase that we had designated in contingency that we moved into the capital outlay. The 911 emergency fund, the resources increased 22,315. And this was because we received reimbursement for a project that we did, the Newcom SIP integration. So that just offset, so we increased the communications appropriation for the expense related to that project that we did. And then the resources offset that. So it was just a direct in and out because we received reimbursement for it. And then for economic development fund, the planning appropriation increased $20,000. And this was due to additional expenses for our new building and planning software, which we had a partial funding through the economic development portion from Fund 14. And then the rest of it came from the general fund for planning. And so contingency was the offset. The public safety fee fund, we increased the police appropriation by 14,000. And this was mostly just to utilize the maximum amount of these funds possible to keep the most amount of money in the general fund and be utilizing what we should be utilizing from the public safety fee fund while still maintaining the appropriate reserves that we want to maintain. And the offset again was from contingency. Stormwater fund, it increased by 466,000. And again, this was very similar to the ones we saw before. It's for the purchase of vehicle fleet purchases that we made. So the, we had the designated contingency that we moved up to capital outlay for those funds that we have spent. The transient lodging tax fund, we had increases for resources by 350,000. And this was just due to additional TLT revenue that just keeps on growing, which we're not mad about. And then we increased the general government and the transfers appropriately by the the split that we receive for TLT. The library gift and memorial fund, we increased the library appropriation by 7,535. And that's just because they tend to utilize the most amount of their grant revenue that they receive every year. So we just wanted to give them everything that they can to, in order to spend it and not, you know, keep it in contingency. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm wondering why we, the contingency money is earmarked. So why is it contingency money? Why wouldn't we just put it in the capital, capital outlay?
And we've started doing that, go, we did that starting next budget, that we've started to put that in the capital outlay. Because it, we didn't realize that they were going to be spending all that money right away for the vehicle fleet. So now we've moved it to capital outlay because it makes more sense if they're going to spend it in the same fiscal year. So this way, it's just, makes more sense. So in previous years, we thought that it was going to be spread over several fiscal years, but that wasn't the case. So that's why we've made these changes here.
And and also to add on to that, we have, as you saw before, a savings plan for each department. So in cases where they are still saving towards longer term equipment, there's a saving plan that they're following. And therefore, we can see if they're hitting those benchmarks.
So what you just said, Katie, about coming out of contingency into, we did that with the budget that we just passed?
Yes, we we reevaluated all that based on a lot of what we were seeing this year of the spending. And we said, hey, if you guys are not going to, if it's not going to be more than a long term purchase, it should just be in capital outlay. If you're going to spend it the same fiscal year. So that's, we've reevaluated all of that. Yeah.
One more. It's a little off, I don't, I don't expect you to know necessarily, but how many, how many vehicles did the city purchase in 23, 24?
We had a lot. Russ may know, because I know we purchased a lot of EV fleet, which I know several of those came to council that you guys saw. We had the sweeper, we had the?
Yeah, we, we purchased a street sweeper, a couple of heavy trucks. Part of that was, we switched over to a hook lift system where we're purchasing one chassis that has multiple bodies that are interchangeable rather than buying multiple trucks to reduce the cost on that. It's in our regular replacement schedule, and it just happened that several of them landed this year. So it was a larger purchases, including a new, part of the large purchase was replacement of a vector, which is several hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment.
Yeah.
All right. So we have no citizen testimony. I'm going to go ahead and close that. Recommendation from staff?
Adopt resolution 2024-3935.
Council deliberation? So you want to make your announcement, the same announcement as last time, right?
Not for the, since we're in an administrative hearing, council is free to make a motion and vote.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Peggy?
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number 2024-3935, approving the supplemental budget number two.
I second. Moved in second that we approve 2024-3935. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is the Newburgh rehabilitation project. This is an opportunity for citizen. Hello, Clay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. My name's Clay Downing. I'm your planning manager.
And I'm Mark Irving. I'm with the Housing Authority, Yamhill County.
So we talked about this a little bit beforehand, and we decided to do more of a joint presentation because it was something where the grant came through and the city acts as the sponsor. But really, the Housing Authority is doing all the major lifting. And so this presentation is intended as, as a highlight on what this presentate, or what this project has done so far and what the city do with the, these grant funds by working with the Housing Authority. One of the major pieces of this being the pub, the second public hearing that occurs during this period is that it is intended to be an opportunity for the public to speak. So we haven't received any written comments at this time. But we may have public comments come in and we'll be prepared for that and can answer questions too when we get done. But with that, we'll go ahead and kick this off and go through these slides. Whoa, that's not the one I was looking for. Ah, that works better. So a number of the things that I'm going to highlight were part of the RCA and a number of the other things that Mark will be highlighting are kind of from throughout the project. But there were kind of the goals and the outcomes associated with this. So the goal was to have 40 households assisted as part of this project. The outcome was 30 households were assisted. When we came through, there were also some additional details that weren't captured as, as clearly I thought in the RCA, but 64 people and 100% of which were low income, as opposed to initially the goals were moderate or low income. And this was with a variety of types of repairs associated with manufactured homes. And so we'll see that later in some of the slides on this presentation. So as part of this public hearing, so again, just to reiterate this, part of it being associated with the noticing to conduct the public hearing for the Newburgh City Council to obtain citizen views about the 2021 Newburgh Rehabilitation Project, take comments about the local government's performance, and administrally close, administratively close the community development block grant. And this is the second hearing of two that are associated with this grant. And these are all part of our obligation as part of the recipient for this grant. So this slide highlights some of the relationships because there were a couple of different agencies involved, and your council hasn't heard or kind of gotten a report back on this project in some time. So the funds actually come from the, from our federal funds that come from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The program administrator for that in Oregon is Oregon Business Development Department, which is typically referred to as Business Oregon. And so we applied for the grant to Business Oregon, we, the city. And it was awarded to the city of Newburgh, who then oversees that as essentially the grant sponsor. And then we did for grant administration and project management services, reached out to the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation. And Mark might be able to highlight the relationship between Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation and the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. But then the Housing Authority of Yamhill County did the work. So they are the professional services provider associated with this project. Would you want to highlight anything else in the, kind of the relationship there with folks or?
The Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation is the nonprofit branch, if you want to say, of Yamhill, or Housing Authority of Yamhill County.
So a few of the milestones are listed here, and I just wanted to show those because this did start in 2020. So late 2020 was when there was first city council direction by resolution to support submission for an application. It was in July 2021 when the city was notified that we had been successful and been awarded this community development block grant. Later in January 22 is when we went into the sub grant agreement with Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation, of which the city is already a member and we continue participating in. And then the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation kind of did that professional services agreement with Housing Authority of Yamhill County as their kind of wing of operations and and doing the work. That occurred in November 22, and then all the work happened after that. So between November 22 and today, that's when all the work occurred on the project to, to do these projects. And then this is a quick layout of how the finances worked associated with this grant. So it was broken into a couple of major project areas, program management, grant management, environmental review was a specific line item, and then the housing rehabilitation loans themselves. On the bottom of the table that you see here, we had $2 left in the balance. So we managed to spend right up to what was available, which is great. One of the things to keep in mind is this is a grant and then it was expended. So there's really a net zero budget impact on the city. That's the intent, that we act as a pass through to make sure these good projects can happen. With that, I'll hand it over to Mark.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm told you're using that arrow.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Clay, and thank you, Mayor and City Council for having us here today. This is, I think this is only my second city council meeting, so I'm a little nervous. If I get stumbled up, just don't laugh too hard. So in 2021, as Clay pointed out, we had the community development block grant award to the city of Newburgh. And we took the reins to actually meet with the public and interact with the public, interview the, the people, make sure that they qualify, the household qualifies, and the house qualifies as well for the grant. Many of the owners, these were all manufactured homes in a park. Many of these residents have very low incomes and no resources to make repairs to their homes. In 2013, the state recognized this need and started allowing the community development block grants, funds to be used to provide grants to owners of manufactured homes situated in a park. Historically, it was just site built, stick built homes that could use these funds. Recognizing that need was a major accomplishment for the program, I think. In July 21, the city of Newburgh was awarded the 500,000 community development block grant through Business Oregon. And the goal was to assist between 30 and 40 low income families with repairs to sustain healthy and safe home. We were able to complete repairs to 30 homes, a total of 64 family members benefiting. 21 of these homes were owned by elderly residents, 18 had disabled occupants, seven households had dependent children, and all households had extremely low or low income. And these are a few of our participants. I got to interact with all 30 families. I mean, they were to a number, to, to a person, they were all amazing to deal with. They had issues. Heather on the left has a disabled partner and was struggling to get in and out of the house. Had, the story with her is great. She had a water leak under her house that was so bad that in order to flush her toilets and do her dishes, she had to go out, turn the faucet on, get some water. I mean, the main turn off, not the hose bit, but the main turn off. She turned it on, water'd go everywhere, she'd fill a bucket, take it in, and then go back and turn it off. So we were able to get that taken care of. Some of the contractors who worked on this went above and beyond. One of them went over and made a temporary repair after he saw what was going on, made a temporary repair just to get it going. And then we came back later in the month and, and fixed the rest of the items. William is a great guy. He, his heat pump, he didn't have air conditioning. His heat was kind of laboring to get things going. He got a new heat pump and a walk-in shower. He's got some pretty bad knees and was having to step over a kind of a high step back to get in to the shower. Few more of the participants. Barbara got a new ramp and a roof, roof repair and electrical repairs. Some of these homes had a mismatch of electrical stuff over the years. And to go in there and straighten that out and give her the peace of mind made a big difference in her life. And Phyllis had some bad hips and a leaky roof, actually had half of a leaky roof. Somebody in the past replaced half of the roof because they couldn't afford to do the whole thing. So, and we replaced the roof and got her a walk-in shower as well. These are just a couple of examples of some great people that I got to work with. We did a number of repairs, all were related to health, safety, structural and accessibility issues. Like you couldn't ask for, I don't like my orange counters, I want blue. It had to be health, safety, or structural issues, which there were four of them. These are some pictures of some roofs that we did. We did a total of 16 roofs, which didn't seem like a huge number, but they were pretty bad. Some of them had three or four layers on them, some of them had blue tarps on them. We did several different kinds of roofs, regular 412 pitch roofs. And then the, I think the white ones are called steam seals. Those are a little bit trickier. Had a good company take care of those first two. Couple of walk-in shower pictures. These make a big difference because many of the people just can't navigate that lift. So they're taking basically not taking showers or kind of taking sponge baths. And to be able to get in, take a real shower makes a big difference. One of the, one of the participants said she felt like a real person when she was done. You know, hadn't been able to have a real shower for years and years, and we were able to get that for her and made a big difference. Some of the older manufactured homes had single pane aluminum windows, some had double pane that were failed. Seven homes received all new windows all the way around and makes a huge difference in the enjoyability of the place, livability. Ramps, five ramps we got installed, nine porches and Ramps, five ramps we got installed, nine porches and decks. Many of these were so bad, um, people had plywood nailed over plywood on cinder blocks to get into their house. Uh, to be able to come in and do that was a big, a big deal. And again, uh, heat pumps, heating and cooling systems, uh, five families had their heating and cooling systems repaired or replaced. Many of them were replaced. We only, I think we only had two that we actually had repairs to. Polybutylene was a great product back in the nineties, but it failed in the plumbing industry wide. Not the plumbing, not the pipe, but the connectors. And many of these houses just had to be repliped, repiped. And so we got ten homes, uh, resolved, uh, plumbing issues. Trip hazards are a big deal, um, in elderly folks and people with disabilities. Lot of the carpet was wrinkled, couldn't, you know, couldn't walk through the house without having transitioned from three layers of aluminum on the kind of bad carpet. And, um, so we were able to do seven homes with all new flooring. And this makes such a big difference in the lives of these people because the old carpet is so nasty and it's just amazing how much cleaner it is immediately after the contractor gets done cleaning out all of replacing the, the flooring. We did twelve homes receive dry rot and siding repairs. Siding on these houses, um, is kind of similar to cardboard. It gets, doesn't get enough paint. It absorbs the moisture and falls off. Literally falls off. And we were able to do twelve homes, uh, with siding and dry rot repairs. And to me, the true value of the project is, um, you know, most of the grants were between ten and fifteen thousand per household. I don't think, none of them went over fifteen thousand dollars. That was kind of the cap for this, for this round. Uh, could represent a used car or a nice family vacation for many of us. Uh, that same amount of money, uh, it was truly life changing for these folks. I do a completion interview or, I don't know if that's the right term, but when we're done, I go and interview the folks and talk to them, have a little sit down. And, um, a hundred percent of them were, I don't know what we would have done without the help. They were right at the end of, right at the end of their reaches. I think that's about my presentation.
All right. So, uh, Mark and I are both obviously happy to answer questions, but the recommendation for today is that you hear and accept any public comments that we have from folks who are here and wish to make them. And then that you consider adopting resolution two zero, two, four, three, nine, three, two, which would close this grant.
I, I have one question before we move to public hearing. I think, Clay, your documents refer to it as a loan. It's not a loan. It was grants to these folks, right?
They were grants.
Okay.
We have, we have another department that has loans involved in it, but.
Okay. So, uh, anybody else have a question? Should we, uh, why don't we go ahead and take the public comment first? If you two don't mind, uh, let Jim come up and make his comment. Then we'll call you back up for questions. Jim, talk.
Howdy. Jim Dolt speaking. Good to see you all. I'm here to jog your memory tonight. I, I hope you'll remember that last October, I spoke to the Newburgh Affordable Housing Commission on this very program. And then in November, I spoke to you, the city council, on this program. And at the time, I asked that you in the future consider using CET funds to continue this very valuable program. Because as you've seen, this program now has run its course. It's done some excellent work, but the money has been used. However, the waiting list of people that would like help remains. There are still people on a waiting list. So. I believe that probably in, I'm guessing in July, you're going to have an opportunity to vote on awarding CET construction excise tax money to potentially the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. And I'm hoping that when that opportunity comes to you in July, I, I'm thinking it's July, that you will remember tonight's presentation. And you will remember the images and the stories that were shared with you tonight. Because there are still people here in Newburgh, living in Newburgh, that need that same kind of help. And I hope you'll give it to them when that opportunity arises. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Gentlemen, if you would.
Well, the public comment policy is that they have to be turned in before the meeting starts. I'm sorry to those who were not able to.
Is your, yeah, thank you. Uh, Clay, would you, uh, like to entertain questions, please?
We're available.
Okay, um, wow, this is quite a touching project. Um, I love seeing people's houses getting fixed that can't afford it. So I'm really impressed. How many, how many people applied for this? I mean, and how do they even know that this money exists? Can you tell me?
We have a, we have a pretty good outreach to, uh, Newburgh prior to writing the grants. This is, um, a cycle, a couple of years it takes. To, prior it was McMinnville and then we roll over into Newburgh. And so before we do the actual grant application and write the grant and get the approval, we've been reaching out to the manufactured home parks in the city of Newburgh with flyers, um, meet and greets, uh, public hearings. That's a part of it. Um, and a lot of it comes from the managers of the parks. When they're given a notice to somebody because your deck's falling off, they need to go, here's your notice and call this place, see if you can get some help. And if we can't help them immediately, we source funds to try to help catch things together, get them through and then come in with the grant and find one out.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have an approximate idea of how many people still need help?
Uh, countywide, I believe.
No, just in Newburgh.
Oh, in Newburgh?
Yeah.
I should dice that out a little bit closer, but I'd say it's probably over a hundred.
In Newburgh?
In Newburgh. Because we have like two, two sixty, something like that on the waitlist right now, countywide. And many of these, many of these manufactured homes are on the waitlist, were too old for this program. So there's a threshold for age on this program. So some of those are lingering because they're older.
Thank you for the presentation. It was a great project. It's pretty exciting. Sounds like these grants are available. You have one in McMinnville, one here. They're going to continue to be available, I would imagine. When can we apply again?
Depends on the funding and how the applicant, application goes for McMinnville this round. We should know by August. And, um, there's a winner application as well. And it depends on if there's any other applications for the city at the time. But I would hope in two years, we would start this process over again.
So it sounds like we will have an opportunity to vote on the CET money possibly for this project. Um, do you know when that's going to come, Will, to council?
So I don't remember the exact date. And Clay, do you recall which session we have that scheduled for?
My recollection is that, this is alternative because it's not published yet. So, um, but tentatively, we have the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund, much smaller quantity, that's going to come on July third. And then the CET fund will come to the city council on, I believe it's July seventeenth. So, so that, and I say those both because I don't want you getting one conflated with the other one. So you'll see one first, then the next one.
I believe that, um, we did a project years back. I'm trying to remember what year it was, but for the manufactured homes that are before that previous, before the cutoff date for this grant, is there going to be any additional grant opportunities for those older manufactured homes that need help?
I believe that was the Myers, Mayers, something like that. That was before I started in this program. Um, I've been scouring the grant, the funding opportunities for, uh, those. And indeed have applied for one for countywide, will, may or may not find those funds available July, August.
It, it just occurred to me that once we have our new grant writer, um, they don't just have to chase federal money. Perhaps the grant writer could also chase for some Ford Foundation money or something that wouldn't come with so many strings attached on the age of the manufactured home. And that's something certainly that we can have a look at as well.
Thank you. Uh, your recommendation, if you, I'll just repeat it. It was to go ahead and pass this resolution.
Yeah. So the recommendation is that your council adopt resolution number two zero, two, four, three, nine, three, two, which closes the twenty twenty-one Newburgh Rehabilitation Project.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, um, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash three nine, three, two, which administratively closes the twenty twenty-one Newburgh Rehabilitation Project and the related Community Development Block Grant.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, thirty-two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is there any other business that we need to transact this evening?
Um, I don't think so, although I will say it's good that we took out the indexing clause because we wouldn't want to double increase STCs. And the next time STCs will be reviewed will be when we relook at the model in twenty twenty-six. So that's good.
So for, uh, the council, I, I'm sure you guys probably got invitations to this, uh, special Olympics of Oregon. It was, it didn't come like, it wasn't a lot of notice for the events that were coming up. But I went to the one on Saturday down in Salem. Lots of great athletes, nothing but joy. One of the recommendations I gave them was to give more notice, reach out to city managers. And just so we could spread the word, they were super grateful to have, uh, me and one of the senators down there interacting with the athletes, handing out medals and things like that. So I just encourage you, if you get that invitation in the future, to go there. Super happy to have us.
I have one item. Uh, I've been talking to Scott with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and also we are going to work together to begin to clean up the city of Newburgh. And I told him that I was sure that the city council would like to take part in that project. Uh, so if that's all right with you guys, he's going to continue to organize and watch for future notices. Yeah, we're going to try to make it more regular and like once a month, maybe. He says one hour a day. I think we're going to need four hours a day. We're still negotiating this. Will?
I got a special spiky tool that my wife spotted for pulling up weeds. It's like a hook on a pole. It's not just a little metal peg. So I can bring that and pull up some weeds.
And he, uh, the city manager is hell on wheels on that little spiky tool. We had a lot of fun last year. So.
You know, I just wanted to mention you can apply to SOLV. Have you heard of that? And SOLV will actually send you out a cleanup spiky tool and bags to, for communities to clean up their local community.
But do you mean that I spent money out of my own pocket when I could have got a spiky tool for free?
Well, I would just like to say, Glenn, congratulations. Welcome to the, to the team. We'll see you next meeting. Uh, plan to give us a few minute presentation on who you are and what you, how you feel about the town, if you would. So we'll see you next meeting. If there's no further business, uh, the meeting is adjourned.